Calling to order, the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the municipality of Anchorage for Monday, January 3, 2011. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Nancy Pease.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Connie Oshimura.
Here.
Arthur Ischam.
Here.
Bruce Phelps.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prue. Richard Wilson. And I will repeat, Bruce Phelps.
Okay, we've got a, no, we don't have a short board now, then we're fine. Okay, there is no minutes this evening. We'll move directly into special order business. Disclosures, please. Ms. Oshimura.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose?
No.
Mr. Parks. Mr. Ischam.
I have nothing.
Mr. Phelps?
Well, I probably should go on the record as indicating that isn't Acclutina case here, right? Yeah. Okay. That my wife will occasionally work for Acclutina. She's not involved in this case, and there's no direct monetary benefit involved, so I believe I can participate, but I want to mention that.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
No. All right. And I would like to disclose that in the past I have had business as a real estate broker and joint venture partner with Acclutina, but it has been several years ago since I have had any business relationship with them, and I have no financial interest in this project.
Thank you, Ms. Oshimura. Okay, we've got a couple of changes to the agenda tonight, Ms. Oshimura. If you'd please make the necessary motions, please.
Regarding case 2010-132, I move to postpone to the February, I believe it is, 7th meeting. And in regards to case G1, item G1, case 2010-135, I also move to postpone until the February meeting.
Which was the, excuse me, which was the first one you postponed?
Uh, D3.
D3.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? Any objection? Okay, those two cases are postponed until the 7th of February. Okay, now we need a positive motion to move through the consent agenda. I move to. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Oshimura, seconded by Ms. Dean for the consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be pulled?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that means that for the consent agenda, we're recommending for approval D1A and 4A.
Oh, I do request to pull 4A. I'm sorry, I didn't notice that that was the consent agenda.
Is there any objection to the approval of D1A? And that is approved as a consent agenda. Ms. Pease.
Yes, I have several proposed revisions to this that I sent through staff in the hope that the commissioners got a draft of those changes. But in addition, I wanted to ask staff to address a couple of points in the letter from Birchwood Community Council, which just came to us by email today, I think. I just saw it today, and it's on the table before us. And specifically, looked to me as if Birchwood Community Council had sort of three major concerns, and I wanted to know if staff had reviewed those and felt, had any opinion as to whether the council's concerns should result in further conditions. And I can sort of spell them out. The first condition is their concern with, appears to be with truck traffic, and the current additional use by Elcon will be the, the truck traffic will occur on Birchwood Spur Road, the New Glen. No truck traffic is anticipated on South Birchwood Loop, and there was a proposed trucking limit of 120 trips Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Given that the council picked up on this, did staff have any further discussions with the council as to whether this should be a condition that would apply to other future industrial uses on the site?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, you want to do these one at a time?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner Pease, I spoke with Ms. Wells earlier this afternoon. She had actually received this from the vice chair, Ms. Crosby, and Ms. Crosby had met with the remainder of the commis, of the council. They're legitimate concerns, but what's in front of the commission tonight is really just permission to ask for permission at some time in the future. The Elcon concerns will come up if Elcon does formally come forward, after assuming they reach an agreement with Acclutina, Inc., and we will certainly take the comments from the community council under advisement for Elcon at that time and for future cases as well, to see if they're appropriate, but to make them a condition of tonight's report, I think is premature.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if I can move on to the other two.
Yes.
Two concerns. I'll just sort of acknowledge Mr. Barrett's comment that it might be premature with regard to the routing of truck traffic, but I think the other two might be generally applicable to other industrial uses. Another concern voiced by the council was that if there are several industrial uses permitted at one time, it would be very difficult to determine responsibility if complaints regarding noise, dust, and operations were made. So how would the staff propose to handle that concern?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, yes, that is, again, a legitimate concern. If we end up with a half a dozen uses going on at the same time, it could become a problem as to who is responsible for which violation, should any violations occur. The department would still rather just handle it on a case-by-case basis, as Acclutina brings a client forward with a proposed use, but if the commission's more comfortable with limiting the uses at any one time to the gravel operation and one or two clients, something like that, we won't object to it. We just think we can do it case by case as they come in.
In particular with noise, though, if you've got the gravel extraction going on, and you've got some other kind of loading or other noisy activity, has this been, happened before? I mean, it, noise is a major concern. They came, the council came back to us with some noise monitoring proposals already, so that impact in particular is a concern, and how would you handle it if you have several noisy activities going on?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, based on the noise tests, yes, it's a legitimate concern, and the sound generated by multiple uses may be somewhat additive, cumulative, but when we did noise tests prior to the gravel conditional use being approved, once we got into the neighborhoods, noise from other vehicles on Birchwood Loop and Birchwood Spur, and just the wind whistling through the trees, essentially drowned out the gravel operation itself. Yes, a human ear can discern the difference in the various noises, but the noise meters did not detect any increase in the decibel level, just because there was a gravel operation going down, going on. How would we handle it if we had three or four, and someone was complaining about the Noise historically is very difficult, because things often happen after hours or on the weekends, and neither DHHS nor the code enforcement folks are available to investigate them. All I could say is that anything else that goes on onsite, anything else that is permitted onsite, would be a principal permitted use in the I-2 zoning district. It will have its own noise, it will have the noise code to comply with, and if it does get out of hand, we will simply go to Mr. Arnison and Acclutina and let him know what the problem is and how are we going to address this. But the department still believes, as each individual use comes in and we see what it is, are they just storage? Are they doing manufacturing? Is it metalwork? Is it going to involve truck traffic? We can handle those one at a time and address those issues with Acclutina and the client prior to either administratively approving it or bringing it to the commission.
Okay, I was, I was listening for the, some assurance that staff could test the different activities, you know, could have some onsite presence and sort of figure out which, where the noise was coming from, but it's possible that future activities won't be major noise generators, so I'm going to trust that, be able to handle it. And the final question I have through the chair, community council had a preference that any expansion outside the one to two acres requested by Elcon be directed south of the site, south or below the site proposed by Elcon, and I wasn't quite clear on the diagram, whether the proposed expansion areas, you know, the concern is that it's close to the entrance to the barrier. Any, any thoughts on whether the expansion shown is particularly screened or buffered in terms of noise, or, and I guess maybe that'll be a question for the petitioner, too, whether the boundaries of this can be adjusted?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, again, it's a sensible suggestion from the community council, and without having any future uses in mind, the department would generally prefer that uses expand to the south, as opposed to going to the east, which is closer to the, the entrance to the property. But again, depending on the use, if it is simply onsite storage with no type of fabrication of materials, there may not be much reason to say why it could not also go to the east if the area was necessary. But if it is anything involving a great deal of traffic or any kind of noise, certainly we're going to ask or recommend to Acclutina that that client move towards the center of the property and not closer to the boundaries.
Any news, Ms. Pease?
Those are all my questions. I have some changes.
Okay, why don't we wait till we have a discussion, and then we can discuss the changes. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. I guess I'm just confused from start to finish on exactly what we're doing. I think I'm probably not alone on that. What would the city propose for the Planning and Zoning Commission to do? If we were to pass this, do we pass it as with the recommendations that are listed on pages five and six? Is that the suggestion, or is it just passed as is? I mean, is there, are you looking for us to make changes? I'm not sure exactly what the planning department's looking at from the board itself.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, yes, the department recommendation is that you pass it as presented with the conditions on five and six, and putting it in your laps for the comfort level you have with potentially everything that Acclutina brings forward being approved administratively. But again, I need to remind us all that what's going to be coming onsite are only going to be what are otherwise permitted uses, and if the gravel operation was not there, those uses would be coming forward with probably no additional review. The department wouldn't even see them. So approve with the conditions on five and six.
Mr. Phelps?
Well, I think that staff actually answered my questions just a moment ago, but my understanding is that the area is zone I-2SL, and that the uses that are being identified here, or potential uses identified here, are those uses that are permitted inside the I-2 zone. Does the special limitation for the area establish any particular constraints on land use?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phelps, I don't remember what the SL is right off the top of my head. I know I looked at it back in November. It's not related to uses, as I recall. I'll ask Mr. Buffer. It was the 200-foot buffer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Potter.
So my interpretation here is that essentially what's happening is that you're requesting the authorization to approve uses on administrative basis inside a conditional use that would normally be approvable or permitted under an I-2 zone, and the difference is it's a conditional use.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Ms. Oshimura?
I just have a couple of ques, a quick question through the chair to Mr. Barrett. What is the cost of an administrative review?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Oshimura, fees just changed on January 1st.
Right. Right, I understand that for this amendment, there is a fee of $960, but for administrative review for each proposed use or site plan change, I'm wondering what that fee is.
Commissioner Oshimura, I do not see on the new schedule that it has changed, so I'm going to say it would still be $960 for any future uses that wish to come in.
So I'd like to make a comment that I believe the economic value of these changes would merit a more significant fee, both for the minor amendment to the previously approved CUP, and also for any new administrative reviews. I just simply want to go on the record as saying that I believe the benefit that will be incurred by the petitioner merits or warrants a larger fee. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I'm actually approaching it from a different point of view, and I'm questioning, well, I pose the question to staff as to why, if these uses are usually allowed in the I-2 zone, that we are so concerned with I-2 zone, uses inside this particular area? Or a different way of saying that, why is it necessary to have an administrative site plan review for uses that otherwise would be approvable or permitted inside an I-2 zone?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phelps, it goes back to the very basic premise of why we would have Acclutina come in for any kind of review for any additional use. One is that the conditional use rules the property right now, and number two, whenever Acclutina brings in a client, we're going to be routing it through all the departments, project management and engineering, traffic, we're going to be looking at paving, drainage, fill, grading. It'll be a regular review.
It's, I guess the que, not to interrupt, but I guess I will. I guess the question really is why? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is I understand what you're doing, the question I have is why you're doing it? And I understand it's a conditional use, and therefore picking it up under that process, but I'm trying to figure out why it's, why this is so special.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phelps, I'm not sure I know how to answer why is it so special. It's the kind, it's, yes, it's being done because it's part of the conditional use, or would become part of the conditional use process, but it's the same kind of review that a project would be charged if they needed this kind of review under any other circumstances. And now, they do need this kind of review because they're becoming part of a conditional use.
So the answer, the answer I'm getting is that we have this review because it's a conditional use. Is that the answer?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Okay.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, okay, we need then a positive motion so we can start, yes, Ms. Pease?
I had several changes that I wanted to propose, or conditions that I wanted to propose that I emailed around, and thought it was worth presenting those before the motion was made.
You know, when you've heard those, and I would suggest that we put a motion on the floor, and then work through any proposals that you may have.
Okay.
Because there were, I think there were three or four of them, so why don't we do them sort of one at a time, and that way we don't have to sort them out? You've moved to approve, and it's been seconded by Ms. Dean. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Actually, I'm moving to approve this particular request to add land uses normally permitted under the I-2 district for an approved natural resource extraction, final conditional use permit, upon and as in case 2008-140, subject to the conditions that are recommended by staff on pages five and six of the memorandum packet.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'd like to propose a finding.
Has it been seconded?
Yes, it has been seconded. Ms. Dean seconded it prior to you even speaking.
I would like to propose three findings, and then one friendly amendment, which is just to clean up some of the language on condition four.
But why would we, why are we talking about findings? I would think we're just talking about amendment to the action.
Yeah, let's deal with the, what you want to propose first, and then we can add the findings later, if that's accepted.
All right. Through the chair.
Go ahead.
On condition four, I'd like to clarify the language proposed by staff, so that it reads a little more smoothly, and then also delete the word et cetera. So the way it would read is, "Those uses to be reviewed administratively rather than by the Planning and Zoning Commission are those which generally do not require a permanent structure, such as," and then there's a list of items. The next sentence starts, "Uses are limited to metalworking, assembly, fabrication, warehousing, and distribution," and then I would eliminate the et cetera, and then continue with the last sentence, "of that condition, accessory and secondary uses such as sheds, portable offices, et cetera, normally associated with a primary use are allowed as part of the review."
Okay, could you restate the first sentence, please?
Yes. "Those uses to be reviewed administratively rather than by the Planning and Zoning Commission are those which generally do not require a permanent structure, such as open-air storage or parking of equipment, vehicles, construction materials, landscaping materials," period.
Accept the change. Okay, Ms., we now need to.
Do you want to provide findings?
Let's do some findings, and then we'll.
Okay. In this particular case, I find that it's appropriate to approve this request. The area in question is a gravel extraction site, but it's also zone I-2. And we've had clarification that this special limitation does not relate to uses, but relates to the buffer. The types of uses that we're discussing this evening or as part of this action are those uses associated with the I-2 district. The recommended approach by staff, I think, is going to be sufficient to ensure that the overall public interest is protected. Each use will have to be reviewed, each use will be reviewed administratively by the department, which will include other municipal entities, and through this review, the issues associated with that particular use should be effectively dealt with. So I think that, so my conclusion is that this use is an appropriate type of use, given the review process recommended by staff.
Before we continue, Ms. Dean, I forgot to ask if you had any objections to the change.
I have no objection.
Okay, fine. Okay, any other findings or comments?
Yes, through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Pease.
Yes, I had three findings, and obviously, we'll have to see if they're acceptable to the commission. I want to just make a finding that this not be considered a broad precedent, and my finding is this. "The granting of administrative review in lieu of Planning and Zoning Commission review for potential additional industrial uses under an existing conditional use authorization is unique to this site and not to be considered a precedent. This site has unusually large and effective physical buffers which alleviate concerns about impacts to adjoining residential areas," and those features are that any new uses are proposed to be contained within eight acres of the 140-acre site. "The site is separated from residential properties by a 100-foot wide, 20-foot-high revegetated earthen buffer and a 100-foot wide natural vegetation buffer, and the site has noise monitors at the perimeter and a specific process for residents to pursue noise complaints, and the main use, gravel extraction, uses the adjacent railroad for transport so that the main use generates very little truck traffic."
Is there any comments on that finding? Okay.
The next finding was just to, that staff shall note that the community has previously submitted noise complaints regarding the natural resource extraction, and has concerns about traffic increases on Birchwood Spur Road and South Birchwood Loop Road.
Any comments on that? Yeah, Mr. Phelps?
I guess I have a concern about, I mean, it's a factual statement to say that these exist, but I don't, I mean, it seems incongruous that we make that statement and then support the proposal.
Would it help to add a statement that says, that says something to the effect of cumulative noise and traffic effects should be brought under consideration as the staff reviews additional uses?
Yeah, I think the way that I would approach it would be that noise issues developed by the, identified by the public in the past should be dealt with through the administrative review process for each particular use, and resolved through the administrative review process.
That's, that's fine, and then we'd probably also, as a separate finding, mention the concerns about future traffic on Birchwood Spur Road and South Birchwood Loop Road.
I think, I feel the same way about that one. If you want to relate it to the process, I think that's appropriate, but just making that factual statement, I don't think's a finding. So the way that you could deal with it would be, traffic and related issues have been associated with this area in the past, and it is appropriate for the administrative review process proposed in this action to continue to review those issues.
All right. That's, his rephrasing captures my concern.
Any further comments? Is there any objection? Is there any objection? Then it is approved. Just for informational purposes, the Alaska Baptist Family Services has been postponed until February 7th, if anybody's here for that. So, the final... We must have missed something. I think that may be it. Mr. Yoshimura, did you, no, 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 okay. We're moving on to item F-5A, which is the 2010 142 ordinance in many AMC Title IV regarding land use boards, and this was postponed from the 12/6 meeting. Just a question for staff, is, are we going to treat this as a public hearing? I don't think so. No, okay, so this is...
I believe it's for action this evening.
Yeah. Okay, so we're on item F-5A. Staff, do you have any comments on this or anything, before we move for action?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. It was to be brought back to you after the commission had previously made some comments. I was looking for a new cover memo on it, but my copy only has the November 10th cover memo.
That's what ours do, too.
I'm not sure what else to say. Action.
Okay, I noticed, looking through this, that we made some comments, as I recall, about some changes, and it doesn't appear there's any changes at all. From the, I think we made some comments, as I recall, about what were the requirements for the diversity of the board, and should everybody be lawyers, or, you know, whatever, and...
That doesn't appear to have been addressed.
And there doesn't appear to be any changes at all.
This is just a copy of the November.
Yes, all of us have this, has everybody had the November issue? Maybe we need to postpone this thing again.
I think there were some major changes to be made that haven't...
Yes, that haven't happened at all.
Well, we asked for some additional information, and we don't have it, obviously, and I don't really want to take action this evening.
Well, I see, yes.
We, I would also like to have the minutes of that discussion, too, when we consider it, so...
Okay, well, it looks like we got a motion to postpone from Ms. Pease, and it's been seconded by Mr. Parks. And I don't know if there needs to be any discussion on this, other than the fact that we need to give some directions to staff on what we expect the next time around.
Yes.
The chair would have contact with Mr. Weaver, providing the status.
Yeah, let me go ahead and just call Mr. Weaver on this thing, and we'll, I think we need a little bit more discussion on this even, when he comes up with the final version, and then we can look at what they, what he's proposed.
You know what I was particularly concerned, by the way, I think a lot of this is just fine, and it's getting down to the fine points, and the part that I was concerned about was on page 13, item D, and it says, "At least four members shall have professional experience," and da-da-da-da-da. And my question is, you know, given the difficulty that we have just finding members that are willing to serve on the planning commission, is this a reasonable requirement? So, it's a question of practicality, you know, is it practical for the administration to find this distribution of people always for the planning commission? And the other part of the question is, and if they don't, does that mean that action by the commission, lacking one of these members, causes the action to be inappropriate? And the answer is maybe not a problem, but I haven't got an answer to that yet.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Well, in order to address your comment, as a fairly regular petitioner, before at least the plating board and occasionally the planning and zoning commission, I have to say that I wholeheartedly support and welcome this change. Real estate development, plating, zoning issues are becoming more and more complicated on a daily basis, and for someone to sit on one of these boards that has no experience whatsoever in any of these matters with engineering, surveying law, real estate, or construction, I think is just extremely difficult. And as I look around the members on this board, or on this commission, I feel that these areas are well represented, as well as the concerns of the public sector. So, I have to say that I, it is very, without mentioning certain professions, it is very difficult to explain a complicated real estate matter to someone who has training in an area that is totally not related. Thank you.
I just want to make a point that I'm not objecting to this necessarily, I'm just concerned about the practical aspects of it, and I want to be sure that it's been thought through, and that legal has reviewed this, and they have concurd that it's not going to be a problem if we just, if we don't happen to have these members and we're taking action.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, on that note, I just, I just wanted to comment. In the years that I've served, I think that four out of nine quota has always been exceeded, so I'm thinking that it hasn't been a problem, but I think it's worth asking, so that's fine. And then, we did have other discussion about language to ensure other kinds of diversity, geographic, and a couple other points of discussion, so I'd like to see the minutes and see that those questions are, and that language is brought forward next time we see this.
Ms. Dean?
I don't know if I'm being premature to discuss things at this point that's in this document, or if I should just wait until the minutes come out, because I had some specific things that I had issues, took issue with on the document. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, or if I should wait for the next meeting.
I think all we're doing now is, the motion is to postpone.
Okay.
And I think when we get the thing back in front of us, that's when we really ought to deal with the nitty-gritty of what's in it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I can wait.
But I'm going to talk with, with Mr. Weaver, so that some of this stuff gets in, so at least we have something to discuss the next time it appears before us. Okay, Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I don't know if it's an oversight or not, but I was noticing that for the planning and zoning commission, city planning was not represented as being one of the items that is important to have. I just think, know that I, I think that city planning is. It's not identified as one of the required professions.
Good point, or land use planning.
All right. Okay, any other further comments on this particular document? Just a question for staff, would you like to see us do this to a date certain, so we get the thing in front of us at our next meeting, which I believe will be in early February?
Mr. Chairman, yes, February 7th, I believe. I was not aware if someone from physical planning was not going to be here tonight, and I'm not seeing, as the commission, any changes whatsoever. I hope early February will be adequate time for them, but yes, let's, let's press them.
Is that acceptable to, Mr. Phelps? Or, okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any objection to postponing this until our next meeting in February, which I believe is the 7th? No objection, that passes. Okay, let's move on to our reports. And what I'd like to do is discuss a little bit about the committees. Last meeting, we had some discussion on that, and I've talked with Ms. Yoshimura today, and if you look on that last page four, I've sort of filled in some of the blanks, and basically, on the AMATs committee, I have Ms. Pease and Ms. Yoshimura. The school site selection committee remains Mr. Eishman and Mr. Phelps. Well, it hasn't totally died yet, but it doesn't happen anymore, for some reason.
It just depends upon their timing for the need for school sites, and it comes up all the time, but just irregularly, can't predict it.
Yeah, it just, it happens. Citizens Air Quality Committee, Ms. Pease. I've recommended for the Airport Master Planning Committee, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Prouse. Ms. Pease, on E, the Parks Planning Committee in Chester Creek subdivision, how did that thing ever come up, and what's the deal on it?
We've, there's never been any request from Parks for me to participate. The Parks plans tend to come before the body as a whole.
Yeah.
And Parks has had a couple of planning efforts, but they've never asked for preliminary participation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I guess maybe we should ask Parks if, you know, it's appropriate to have a commissioner involved at the earlier stages.
Okay, well, my question is more specific on what, why does it say "and" Chester Creek subdivision? What's, where did that come?
I have no idea, that's been, just reprinted ad nauseam.
Ad nauseam, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I think that it would probably be appropriate if we just call it the Parks Planning Committee, and take that Chester Creek subdivision out of there. And we'll leave you on the thing, and I'll try and find out if it's what they want to do about it.
Okay, because as I said, there have been, you know, there are, there's a slow trickle of Parks plans being generated.
Right, okay. Under F, Title 21 Committee, I have Mr. Eishman, Mr. Parks, is there anybody else that would like to serve on that?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Ms. Dean? On the Capital Improvement Committee, I've got Mr. Frederick and Ms. Yoshimura.
And if anyone else would like to serve, I'm more than happy to share.
Share the wealth.
I'll do that, but we all agree with anyone else.
Okay. And then on H, the Alaska Railroad Policy Committee, I have Mr. Eishman and Mr. Phelps on that one. And there may be other committees that come up, you know, this is not a static type thing. We can form committees and subcommittees as necessary to do our job, but I guess I see us, hopefully, becoming a little more proactive about what's going on. I see these various committee members perhaps going to work sessions or something like that, and then at this time of the meeting, if we don't run until midnight consistently, to then give some sort of a report, so we're sort of more aware of what's going on before a stack of documents two inches thick drops on our desk, and we're trying to figure out what it's all about. So, that's kind of my concept for these committees. We don't want to insert ourselves in the decision-making process, because that, that's reserved for the public hearing, but at least for us to become a little bit more knowledgeable on things that are going on. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I would just add, specifically with the Capital Improvement Committee, we review this inches or inch-thick budget every year at the last minute, and there may be some opportunity that we want to assert, since we are assigned to review it, to have members of the committee go through it a little earlier, maybe even when the administration is proposing it, to say, you know, this does or doesn't support some of the main principles of Title 21. You know, for example, if there's a new town hall being proposed throughout by Tudor Road, that might not support the concept of existing major employment centers, that kind of thing. So, that one in particular, every year that I've been on the commission, we've sort of slapped our foreheads when the budget came up and said, "Gosh, this is a lot to go through, and we should have gone through it earlier."
Any other comments on committees?
Mr. Chairman, what about all these plans? The West Anchorage Plan, the East Anchorage Plan, do we have interest in having members participate in any of these plans?
Do we want to have a, some sort of a planning or a regional or neighborhood review plan committee, or something like that? Any ideas?
Well, my experience was on the Hillside District Plan, that it was very beneficial to have participated in that prior to actually my time serving on the commission. I knew a lot more when the plan came about the work that had been done in those long meetings up on the hillside, and I think it was beneficial. And I know Ms. Pease and Mr. Weddleton, when he was on the commission, also participated in those, and I think it serves a purpose for those commission members that may not have the availability to participate in all of the plans, but that we could rely upon a commissioner to bring forth information to us in a timely manner.
And as I recall, even though you, the three of you that you mentioned had participated in that hillside planning, it did not force you to recuse yourselves from the decision-making that went on here. It was not necessary to recuse yourself, no. So, I think that's a good idea, and it would be, in my mind, it would be sort of a flexible floating committee, depending on which part of town you lived in, or something like that, that if you wanted to participate in those things, and I don't know how we want to word it.
You know, I just make the observation that the development of a plan takes sometimes years, and oftentimes, it, the plan changes over that period of time, and given our limited capability of engaging these processes, probably, I mean, just so you know, I think that the highest payoff is going to be at the very end, in terms of knowing what the process is, that they've used to actually, the staff developed the plan, and they know what the principal issues would be. And that oftentimes comes from discussion with staff, actually, and I think the highest payoff, from my point of view, is, is to participate in that way, and to bring that information forward to the commission. It's a little bit different approach, but I just, I'd warn you that, you know, these plans take a couple of years, and they go through lots of changes when they're developed, and if you put all your effort into that, what you're going to see is something that's going to change over time. And that's okay, it just means it's a major time commitment.
Well, I think for any commissioner that's willing to make that time commitment, especially like, for example, in the West Anchorage Plan, where we had to deal with Spinard Road, you know, that issue, and I think that it's, once you get a two-inch-thick document that's glossy and in four color, there's very little change that can happen. It's more or less almost a rubber stamp, from my brief experience on the commission, Bruce.
Well, you know, I, in terms of the Hillside District Plan, my recollection is, there were actually very, a lot of changes that we made to a document that was, you know, two inches thick and glossy. I mean, and they had gone through a lengthy process to develop that plan, and I think the commission had a large impact as a result of our very active involvement in their view of that plan. I'm not suggesting not to do this, I'm just saying that it's a, it's a very large time commitment if you approach it that way.
And I think the reason that we were, the commission was able to make these changes to the Hillside District Plan was because there were commissioners that were very familiar with the plan, because they had participated in a number of prior discussions.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Through the chair, I just, I wanted to echo Ms. Yoshimura, and just as... Through the chair, I just, I wanted to echo Ms. Yoshimura, and just as a specific example, you know, when John Weddleton was able to say, "I went to 50 meetings," or whatever, with the local people, and I know staff doesn't really like the idea of gravel roads, but on the very low-use roads, that's what the local people have spoken for again and again. So it's that kind of real, on-the-ground knowledge that helps us, gives us the confidence when we are making changes. And, you know, I think the extent to which we should encourage commissioners who are available to dig into these plans, it's really helpful if someone has read each draft as it comes along. And if we split the work up, I think we can handle it. Right now, we have the Midtown Plan somewhere out there in limbo, and we have the West Anchorage Plan, and that's just two of them. And so if we have a couple of people who can, you know, starting now, read those drafts pretty carefully, maybe they can't keep it up, but it's, I think, an effort worth doing to make sure we represent, we hear the public directly, as well as through staff, as the process unrolls over several years. So I guess I would propose that, for those plans that are underway, we at least have a liaison who checks in once in a while, and lets us know when meetings are coming up, and review, and can review the preliminary drafts.
Mr. Parks?
I too would support being involved in those meetings, because I think it's one of the things that we get lost. I know when I see the glossy two-inch piece, it's hard for me to digest it in two or three days, and I wouldn't mind spending some time in one or two of those over the term that I'll be here. I think it's imperative that we have somebody that is intimately involved with the decision-making process in that plan, so that we know where their mind was coming from, because when you get it in a package, sometimes you don't know what led up to it. And if there's somebody on this board who's read it and been there, I have the utmost respect for the amount of effort and time that it takes, anyway, and then you take that additional effort, I think it's important. I would support being involved, and I'd be one that'd be willing to do that. Not even in my own neighborhood, I mean, I think it's important enough for the city.
We have two ongoing-
Yeah, two, what, Midtown and West Anchorage are in process right now.
Do we have volunteers?
Yes. West Anchorage, okay. What does that, let's see, west, west?
I'll take Midtown.
You want, okay, Midtown for, uh-
Ms. Dean?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what we'll do is, we'll create two new, two new names here, we'll have it, Midtown Plan and the West Anchorage Plan.
And if someone else wants the air quality, I could do Midtown, I'm on too many committees otherwise.
So I think what's also important is for staff to be well-informed that this is the position that the commission is now taking, that we do want to be informed that when these committees are-
I'm sorry. Through the chair, I think, to staff, I would just like to say, I think it's important that staff be informed that this is the position that the commission is now taking, and that we would like to be informed on a regular basis when these committees are meeting, so that we can participate. And I think it would be even advantageous for staff to put it on our calendars, so that everyone knows what the schedule is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the committees? Okay, Title 21. As you know, Mr. Coffey has been tasked by the mayor to do some adjustments, I guess, to the, to the plan. And I don't know if adjustments is the right term, or wholesale throwing out of three or four years' worth of work, but nevertheless, I personally feel that if we have major changes to the plan, that those parts that are changed may need to come back to us for a public hearing. And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but I want to discuss it a little bit. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, I think it definitely should come back for a public hearing, and also, an adequate time for this commission to read the changes, side by side with what we approved. I'm very concerned and kind of disappointed that we spent so many hours, you, Mr. Eichmann, and Ms. Yoshimura, and I think Mr. Phelps too, for example, on some of the design standards, we spent six, seven, eight lunch hours working out very carefully a package of design standards, and for all those hours of labor to be pushed aside without, you know, some careful consideration as to why. It's, it's a different, it's not a very democratic kind of planning on the face of it. So if there are specific changes, or wholesale changes, I think we at least need to see a side-by-side version of the changes and some explanation. We worked very carefully to get things such as the width of trims, and the, you know, we discussed things such as that, and so, or the number of housing styles within a subdivision of a certain size. So I would like to be given time, and also the side-by-side comparison, so that we can deliberate or consider the proposed, latest proposed revisions.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Um, you know, I think there's only one person in this community that knows more about Title 21 than anyone else, and that is Mr. Coffey. And I do have a great deal of respect for him and his diligence and his hard work, and his ability to bring compromises to all of the factions and forces that have participated in the Title 21 rewrite. Having said all that, I think procedurally, it would be at least appropriate for us to receive a preliminary draft of the changes, perhaps in a work session, so that we could decide, as a commission, whether or not the changes were substantive enough that would require a public hearing. And I am not familiar enough with all of the legalities and procedures, but I would not want all this hard work to become flawed in some way because of a lack of a procedure, so.
What I'm also concerned about is, if it doesn't come forward, if it's appropriate for a public hearing, if there could be some sort of lawsuit brought by somebody that, you know, said you didn't use the proper procedures, not so much on what was in it, but the actual procedures that were used. And so, you know, we need to look out for the administration and the mayor and everybody else, that they don't get themselves into a bind, because it's a litigious society, and if people want to sue, they can sue. So we need to make sure that all our ducks are in a row, I guess is the best way to describe it. That's what I'm concerned about, you know.
You know, I don't really know a lot about this, actually, and I'm sure, this is the first time I heard about it, okay? What's happening here?
Well, as best I understand it, and please, you know, fill in on what I missed, or what I misinterpret, is that Mr. Coffey has been hired by the administration to go through and look at sort of the final product that's been conditionally approved by, by us, and by, or it's been totally approved by us and conditionally approved by the Assembly, and make those changes. I know that he's working with the architects, and the builders, and stuff like that, on certain changes, and I'm just, and my concern is, is that if they're major changes, they probably need to come back in front of us for a, some sort of a public hearing. I just, you know.
Well, I think, you know, obviously, that needs to happen, and I would imagine procedurally, it must happen. I can't imagine that Title 21, the Deals of Land Use Regulations, is going to be potentially approved by the administration and the Assembly, if it's substantially changed, without a review by Planning Commission. You know, under, under all this is the concept of fair process and public involvement and access of the public into the process, and we've had public hearings and all these. And if you don't have that, you have a very flawed public process and a very flawed planning process. And you really need to have the light of day. One of the reasons that planning gets a bad rap at times is a lack of transparency. And you really need to have it open, and explain why the changes are being made, and you possibly could defend them. I'm not saying that everything we did was correct, but if, in fact, they're going to be making changes, they're going to have to explain those to the public, and they're going to have to explain them to the public, and they're going to have to explain them to us.
Yeah. I'm, and just as a comment, you know, I think Ms. Osiander was sort of the person that was the Title 21 chairman within the, within the Assembly, and I intend to call her and just ask her what her plans are, you know, and sort of feel them out. I don't know exactly, you know, how she feels about it, quite honestly, because I haven't seen anything in the media about her thoughts on that at all, so, but I'm going to call her, so find out how the Assembly, or at least how she feels about it.
So I guess the reason they hired him is because there's lots of concern out there about the changes in Title 21? I mean, that's, I gather the reason why.
Yeah, well, I think so.
But we didn't hear that much concern-
Let me make a couple of statements.
There's probably some other reason.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that I'm aware of. I know that today, Mr. Coffey was presenting to the mayor his review of the first, basically, four months of work that he's done on Title 21, and he spent a lot of time meeting with BOMA and the Contractors Association in town. Not answering concerns, but listening, trying to be a mediator more than anything. I've seen some of the product that's been in Title 21. I saw the drafts when it was at the Assembly two years ago, three years ago, and read them, and they were, you know, they were huge. I mean, they're hard to understand, hard to grasp. And I think what the mayor's thought process was, was try to get those down and condensed, so they would be easily understood by the people who are going to have to execute them, which is the contractors and developers throughout the city. And Mr. Coffey has quite a bit of experience. And as you all well know, Mr. Coffey and our partners, and have been for 25 years, so I converse with him about this kind of stuff all the time, not just because it's part of our day-to-day life. And I think that, I don't think Mr. Coffey's intention is to try to ramrod. I don't, that's not really what he's being told to do. He's being told to, you know, look, mitigate, try to get things put together, give it back to the mayor, then it's in the mayor's hands to do that. I mean, that's, that's what the contract is, it's to go through and kind of clean up and get everybody done. That's my understanding, and he may have a different understanding, but that's my understanding, and I don't believe it's something that's being ramrotted. I think it's something that's, they're trying to get a product that can be utilized and put in to effect in a way that can be understood by all the contractors and all the people that are out there. At least that's, that's my take.
Anyway, it's, I think it's, it's something that's, you know, that we need to attempt to get ourselves involved in, but, you know, if, if they don't want us to be involved, well, that's, we're appointed, and they're elected, and I can accept that.
In terms of-
Ms. Pease, go ahead.
Yeah, in terms of transparency, though, Mr. Parks mentioned the BOMA and the contractors. Is there a working group, and if so, is this an advertised working group, open to the public, and is it, are there diverse, is there diverse representation, or is Mr. Coffey's effort solo? I'm still confused as to the process, and whether it's transparent and advertised, and those other important considerations.
Ms. Dean?
You know, Ms. Pease, I can't speak to that specifically, whether it's been advertised, but I know he's met more than two or three groups. I know that he's met with probably eight or nine groups over the last four months that I'm aware of. So I don't know, I can't tell you the names of the groups, but I know it's diversified by community, by, you know, people who build commercials, people who build and work in that environment, planners and those kind of things, so, you know, I can't, I can't speak to the, to each one, but I know that he's met with lots and lots of people over the last four months. And it's going to continue into the new year, until March or April, is my understanding.
Ms. Dean?
I know that one of the organizations is Anchorage Home Builders Association, has been involved. I believe their meetings are open to the public. They are published online on their newsletter. They're not, I imagine the public can show up, it's not been, that they couldn't. They did form a committee for, to talk about Title 21 with Dan Cuddy, I'm, I'm sorry, Dan Coffey, and they did meet with him several times. From what I understood, they were asked to come up with, you know, their main issues that they had problems with in Title 21, to discuss with Dan. And I attended a couple of the meetings, and I, I think there were, I don't know what other associations, other than, I'm pretty sure BOMA was involved. I'm sure probably AGC was also involved, General Contractors Association, but I don't know who the others were, but I know for sure Anchorage Home Builders Association was definitely involved.
Any other comments, or, okay, at least we brought it up, and I think it's something that, that it's, we're gonna, something's gonna happen, I mean, it's, undoubtedly, something's gonna happen, and it's a question of whether we're going to be involved in it or not. I think that's something else probably I ought to talk with Jerry Weaver about, you know, what, does he have any plans on getting us involved?
You know, Art, I think if, if, I think it would be appropriate for you to visit with the mayor and see if he plans on putting it here, because I think that's going to be something that the administration is going to have to do. If I were you, I think that's what I would do, is I would, I would talk to Mayor Sullivan Seane, ask him what his intentions are, because Mr. Coffey's working in his direction.
Yeah.
You know, he's not working for, he's working because he wanted to do that, so-
Right.
If you want it back here, my suggestion is you have a conversation with the mayor and say, "We think it would be appropriate." I don't think that's, I wouldn't think that would be out of character.
I don't think it's out of line, quite honestly.
No, I think it's a good idea, because really, you know, Mr. Weaver works for the administration, you're going to put him in a difficult position, and it really makes more sense to go with the mayor and talk about this issue. And, you know, we don't know what the issues are yet, we only know that there's this process going on, and so it's premature to come to any sort of conclusions, but I think it's reasonable to ask, what's the intent, what's the product, are we going to be involved, those types of questions.
Yeah. I'm just, maybe, maybe my two key people I need to talk to are, are Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Osiander, you know, those, those two. Ms. Osiander, because she was the Title 21 guru on the Assembly, and matter of fact, she ran, the last time she ran, she said, "I want to go another three years so I can finish Title 21."
Oh.
And she's now in the year two, so. Okay, any other things we need? This is the first opportunity we've had a chance to talk, and that's kind of nice, so. Anybody else got anything they want to bring up, at all? Any comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'm looking for you next week.
Okay. Motion?
I don't think there's a meeting there.
I didn't know.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Pease, did you make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And it was seconded by Ms. Dean, is there any objection? We are adjourned.
Okay. So there's no meeting.
Did I correctly that there is no meeting on the 10th of January? Is that correct?
We are free for a month.